Good evening. It's on or about 7:00 PM, Monday evening, June 26th. This is a special session of Athens City Council, which will then be followed by a special session of the Committee of the Whole. This being a special session, certain things will be amended, which we usually do, such as communications from elected officials and opportunities for people to speak on topics, not on the agenda at the end. The mayor is out of town tonight. Our president of council is, Chris Nicely, is now acting mayor. I'm Jeff Reisner. I'll be president pro tem for the session tonight. First thing to do is to establish a quorum. Although we have two members absent, we do have a quorum, so we will proceed. Second thing will be ordinances for a third reading. These are the ordinances that will be either approved or disapproved tonight, starting with ordinance 71-23, an ordinance authorizing construction and construction engineering of the Stimson Avenue Waterline Extension Project Number 364. This is introduced by Councilmember McKay, but in his stead, Member Crowell, will you carry on?
Thank you, President Pro Tem Reisner. I'll go ahead and read through this. I believe Member McCary likes to read at the third reading. Whereas, the said extension will provide water service to the new fire station and any future expansion to the east across the Stimson Avenue Bridge. Section 1, the Service Safety Director is hereby authorized to advertise and accept bids where necessary and to enter into contracts with the lowest and best bidder for construction and construction engineering of the Stimson Avenue Waterline Extension, Project Number 364. Section 2, the 2023 Appropriation Ordinance 155-22 is hereby amended by appropriating from the unappropriated balance the sum of $200,000 to water fund and increasing the total appropriations by said amount. Section 3, the Service Safety Director is further authorized to expend up to $200,000 from the water fund for said project. I'd like to make a motion to approve 71-23.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Administration? Audience? Very well. All those in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. It's passed. Ordinance 72-23, an ordinance authorizing engineering services for design of the Columbus Road Lift Station, Project Number 359, introduced by Councilmember McCary. Member Crowell?
Thank you, President Pro Tem Reisner. I'll go ahead and read this as well. Whereas, the city has received $120,000 in community development block grant funds for construction of this project and plans to apply for $500,000 in critical infrastructure funds. Section 1, the Service Safety Director is hereby authorized to enter into contract for engineering services for design of the Columbus Road Lift Station, Project 359. Section 2, the 2023 Appropriation Ordinance 155-22 is hereby amended by appropriating from the unappropriated balance the sum of $175,000 to sewer fund and increasing the total appropriations by said amount. Section 3, the Service Safety Director is further authorized to expend up to $175,000 from the sewer fund for said project, Number 359. I'd like to make a motion to approve 72-23.
Second. We've had a motion and a second. Any discussion from council? Administration? Audience? All those in favor of approving 72-23 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Been approved and passed. Ordinance 73-23, an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise and accept bids for construction and construction engineering of the city sewer system improvements, Project Number 330, and declaring an emergency, introduced by Councilmember McCary. Member Crowell?
Thank you, President Pro Tem Reisner. Section 1 of this ordinance, the Service Safety Director is hereby authorized to advertise and accept bids upon approval by the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency for construction and construction engineering of the city sewer improvements to include the Richland Lift Station, Gravity and Force Main Sewers, the State Route 56 Lift Station, and the West Union to Richland Force Main, Project Number 330. Like to make a motion to approve 73-23?
We've had a motion and a second. And is there any discussion among council? Administration? Audience? Very well. All those in favor of approving 73-23 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. 74-23, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application to participate in the state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement programs or Issue 1 funds and to execute contracts as required, introduced by Councilmember Reisner. That's me. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt 74-23. Second. We've discussed this in committee. It's been read twice. Correct me if I'm wrong, administration. This is something we do almost every year, get these funds to make improvements within the city. I highly recommend that we approve it. So, I make a motion that we adopt 73-23? We already had a second, didn't we? Thank you. All those in favor of adopting 74-23 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. 75-23, an ordinance amending the 2023 Appropriation Ordinance 155-22, introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Pro Tem Reisner. There are four appropriations in this ordinance: $44,500 to the street fund for payment on the university estates assessment, $50,000 to the sewer fund for installation of a building to house the city's VAC truck, $20,000 to the storm sewer fund for backfill material related to the $50,000 to the storm sewer fund for repair of the Meadow Lane Storm Tunnel. And we have discussed this in committee and read now for the third time. I'd like to make a motion to approve 75-23.
We've had a motion and a second. Any discussion among council? Okay. Administration, anything to say about it? Audience? Very well. All those in favor of approving 75-23 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. 76-23, an ordinance amending the 2023 staffing levels authorized by ordinance 147-22, part-time and seasonal auxiliary patrol officers, introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Pro Tem Reisner. Section 1 of this ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending the 2023 staffing levels for part-time and seasonal auxiliary patrol officers authorized by ordinance 147-22," to read as attached heretofu and incorporated herein by reference. The attachment refers to the auxiliary officers will be non-sworn-in officers and will have the starting pay at $1 less than a full-time patrol officer. I'd like to make a motion to approve 76-23.
We've had a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving 76-23 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. That concludes our third readings. We now have a one-reading resolution. R09-23, a resolution opposing ballot issue 1 to raise the threshold for passage of citizen-initiated constitutional amendments to 60%, introduced by all council members. Member Swank, do you care to read this?
Yes, sir. And when you read what this is about, a resolution opposing ballot issue 1 to raise the threshold for passage of citizen-initiative constitutional amendments to 60%, it's only appropriate to note that this was originally submitted to council by a citizen of the community. This was a citizen-initiative suggestion for us to pass a resolution. It's not long, but if you indulge me, we'll go through it because, as we will see, this is a very, very important piece of legislation that we're considering this evening. Whereas, Ohioans have had the right to amend their Ohio constitution through a simple majority for over 110 years, and whereas Ohioans voted to grant themselves with a simple majority the freedom to place constitutional amendments directly on the ballot, and whereas issue 1 would raise the threshold for passage of citizen-initiated constitutional amendments to 60%, thus giving 40% plus 1 of the voters the ability to block the will of the majority, and whereas issue 1 would undermine the sacred principle of one person, one vote, and whereas Ohioans have not abused the right to place constitutional amendments on the ballot with just 71 citizen-initiated amendments on the ballot since 1913, and whereas with the December 2022 passage of House Bill 458, the Ohio General Assembly prohibited August special elections except for U.S. House nominations, and whereas the legislature has called for a special election for issue 1 on August 8, 2023, a date that historically yields a low voter turnout and that will expend millions of Ohio tax dollars, and whereas the process to place a constitutional amendment on the ballot is already a challenging task, requiring the collection of thousands of valid signatures from 48, excuse me, 44 of Ohio's 88 counties, and whereas by including the need to collect a certain threshold of signatures from all 88 counties, almost guarantees such efforts to amend our Ohio constitution will be cost prohibitive for most groups. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Athens, Ohio. Section 1, Athens City Council opposes the Ohio Legislature's August 8, 2023 special election to place issue 1 on the ballot. Section 2, Athens City Council believes that citizens should vote no on issue 1 to maintain Ohioans' freedom to place citizen-initiated constitutional amendments on the ballot and uphold the sacred principle of one person, one vote. Section 3, the clerk of council is hereby instructed to mail copies of this resolution to Secretary of State Frank LaRose, Senator Frank Hoagland, Senator Rob McCauley, State Representative Jay Edwards, and State Representative Brian Stewart. Section 4, this resolution shall be in full force and effect at the earliest moment permitted by law on its passage and approval by the mayor. I would move that council adopt Resolution 923.
We've had a motion and a second for this resolution discussion. Member Crowell?
Thank you, President Pro Tem Reisner. Thank you, Member Swank, for reading this full resolution. I want to encourage anyone listening to city council tonight to realize that we have an election on August 8, and it's extremely important that we defeat this issue 1 and that people go to the polls. This was specifically against the sponsors of this issue 1, against some of their own advice about having elections, these elections in early August, are specifically trying to have a low voter turnout in order to hopefully pass this issue 1. It is absolutely anti-democratic, this idea that a majority of 40 or a minority of 40% can overturn the way that we have been doing business in the state of Ohio for over 110 years is absolutely just ridiculous. And I hope that the voters come out and send a clear message to the State House about our belief in democracy and the rule of the majority. 50% plus 1 is a fine standard to have, and I am absolutely against state issue 1. Thank you, President Pro Tem Reisner.
Member Solvay?
Thank you, President Pro Tem Reisner. So, I'd like to add to that, and I think it's important to note that this is not a partisan issue. It really is something that is an extremist power grab by the current legislature. I think it's important to note that Maureen O'Connor, our former Supreme Court Justice, who retired recently, a Republican, opposes this. All former governors of both parties oppose this. All former attorneys general also of both parties oppose this. I think this makes a strong statement that this is a really terrible idea. Thank you.
Other comments? Member Swank?
I've been voting for almost 50 years, and I can honestly sit here and say without reservation that this is probably the most important vote I will have made in those 50 years. People say, "Well, we choose presidents, and that's an important office." But presidents come and go, four years, eight years. The possible repercussions or effects if this were to pass will last generations and will have a profound effect on how business is done today, tomorrow, not in our kids' life, but in our grandkids' life. As Solvay said, this is a nonpartisan resolution, and it's been purposely crafted to reflect a broad-based opinion that the majority rules and that for over 100 years, we've had a process in place that works well. After the vote, I'm going to have a couple questions about what the city can do, but I, like my colleagues, can't emphasize enough the importance of two things. People get out of vote on August 8, and they vote no on issue 1.
Any other comments, council? Administration?
I would just echo my support of the citizen who brought this resolution forward, and he is a representative. Ted Linskey is a representative of the Southeast Ohio Labor Council, the AFL-CIO, with the union backing this. This is also supported. Opposition to this issue 1 is supported by the Ohio Municipal League, and as Councilmember Spelness mentioned, it's a nonpartisan issue. The League of Women Voters is also saying, "Please make sure you vote." They would urge a vote no on it. And I would add to everyone who's listening to urge your neighbors to vote. We have encountered lots of situations where people are not even aware there's an August 8 election. Previous voter turnout has been as low as 8%. So, that's mighty few people who are going to make some big decisions on which way this goes. Thank you.
Audience? Anyone out there care to speak to this? Okay. We've had a motion and a second. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 09-23 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. It has passed.
Quick question.
Member Swank?
Now that this is passed, and this may be a question for the law director, so we may have to wait on an answer. I say this because I grew up in Akron, but if the city of Athens had a Goodyear blimp that we could fly, would it be permissible to put on the side of that Goodyear blimp, "Vote no on issue 1"? Now, I say that somewhat facetiously, but we do have a stationary blimp on East State Street, and it's called the sign at the community center. Now that we have passed a resolution, can we display "Vote no on issue 1" on that community center sign?
I...
Member Solvay?
Well, yes. I actually talked to Law Director Eliason about putting any signs up, and she, we had quite a conversation about it, and she said that first, you can never put anything up that of any political nature that would cost the city any money, and second, she was very clear that we cannot do anything of the kind.
Okay. Thank you. Well, that's the last item on our agenda for a special session of council, so I will make a motion that we adjourn. Second. We had a motion to adjourn. Do we, okay, so all those in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. We're adjourned from our special session. However, don't leave. You are now in a committee of the whole. You thought you could get away. We have two items for the Committee of the Whole. The 2024 rate/fee increases, followed by utility easement, University Estates Lift Station. For the first point, the 2024 rate/fees increases, I'll turn to our deputy service safety director, Andrew Chicky, to speak to it.
Yeah. So, we are currently looking at all the fees that are encased in Title 1. There are over 120 different fees that reside there. Of those, there's a much smaller number. We did quite a bit of work last year to clean things up, if you recall, and move some items that were not in Title 1 into Title 1, which is where it should be. But at any rate, we are looking specifically at revisions to the sewer rates, which is something that happens almost annually for both the base rates and the per-thousand-gallon rate after the base. To do that, we are currently reviewing the debt service schedule and revising our projections to determine what kind of increase to propose. We will have that proposal when council returns from recess with a specific percentage. The second is a proposal for wastewater discharge rates. We call it septic hauling. So, when we have outside entities that bring septic into the city to dispose of, think of hauling services for septic tanks, we currently have a .065 per gallon rate that we charge for septic. The request will be in the neighborhood of .075 per gallon. And then, the third part specifically is related to the code office and reviewing the code rates that currently exist there and proposing any changes or increases, if any. They typically have the most other types of fees that exist in Title 1. Separate from that and not included in this particular piece of legislation will be trash fees, which will be part of the trash contract itself, and fee increases related to that as a separate ordinance, as well as parking garage fees. We are, we, at the beginning of this month, we ended our ground lease with Sprint, who had a tower, and they paid a monthly rental fee to us. That was removed, so the revenue from that is going away. So, with that, we have to revise our projected revenues, and I'll defer to our auditor to see what that will look like specifically, as well as the improvements that we'll be making there, what kind of anticipated revenues and expenses we can see for just annual operations of the garage.
Questions or discussions? Member Crowell?
Just a comment. I would like to thank the city administration for getting this process going. We're not even at the half-year point in this calendar year. And to speak again for a member, Grace, who I believe was sort of spearheaded this idea that we need to start talking about our rate increases now in order to have, you know, introduce this idea prior to our recess so that in August, we can get going, and as city administration has just indicated, the department heads have already been asked to look at these and prepare for August so that we can really be talking about these in committee later in the year, and people, as Member Grace would argue, will have the time to do their own personal budgeting in order to prepare for these increases in January. So, thank you to the city administration.
Member Swank?
Two points. One a question and one a point. You mentioned trash fees. Do you have an update for us on the timeline for the bidding process? So, we have some idea when these might be coming before council?
I do not.
Okay. Second question, not only a question, but a comment, maybe a suggestion, that in addition to automatically looking at fee increases, that we also take a long, hard look at controlling costs. What I'm hearing is it's automatic, we're going to raise them again. I think we need to look at the other side of the coin, too, as wherever possible and appropriate, and I'll use those two words again, possible and appropriate, that we also look at cost-saving
Administration, would you care to speak to anything that needs to be clarified or brought forward? Very well, then. We'll move on to our next item. Utility easement, University Estates Lift Station. And I turn to the deputy service safety director.
Okay. So, in University Estates, when it was first constructed, some of the utilities, specifically the sewer, was built just outside of the University Estates Boulevard right-of-way, the 682 right-of-way. That's not an unusual thing. That happens occasionally when you're in the field. You draw up the plans, and sometimes certain lines can't go exactly where you think they should. What is not so common is, once constructed, communication typically will come back to say, "This had to be built in a specific location. We had to move things a few feet left or right or up or down." And in this case, we were not aware of any changes to where it was plotted until this recent construction of the medical center in University Estates of Oculus Acquisitions, where it was discovered that the sewer line was just outside of the prescribed easement area. So, in this case, this is to... So in this case, this is to clean that up and to increase the easement to actually encompass the location of the existing sewer that is there and in place.
Hmm. What are we looking at?
So maybe you can help describe that for them.
Yeah. So what we're looking at...
You have to explain it to me, too.
Very simply, if you look at the solid line on the right, I know it's a little bit hard to see, that would be where the easement ought to be, or where it was prescribed. There's a dotted line that shows the existing sanitary sewer line. The increased easement is to the left, that other solid line. So we're just increasing it just a little bit. This is actually a very small amount of an increase. It's just to cover over the amount of sewer line that's there with a little bit of wiggle room to be able to service it. Essentially, easement, too, is .151 acres. So a very small strip. But it's something that we should do in order to maintain the line.
Member Spielness, you seem to be...
So where exactly, what road are we talking about here?
Where's my laser pointer?
I have a laser pointer.
And I said I didn't need it, but maybe I...
This little area is the area that currently exists. The dotted, in the dotted line is...
The dotted line is the existing sewer line. And you'll see that it's outside of that solid line to the right.
I see that.
So it should be on the inside of that, to be inside the easement area.
That's clear. I'm just trying to get, trying to figure out where exactly this is. Yeah, where? Yes, yes.
Gotcha. So if, if you're at the very bottom where the line is coming across, that would be six-eight-two, and there's a little lift station area that's right there. So it's connecting in. So it's coming down and then making a dogleg there. And it's just outside of the prescribed easement area.
And this is city-owned property, then?
No, it's not. That's why we're seeking the easement to increase our easement width. Condition is, according to what I received from Director Stone, that they're agreed, and we are not seeking council permission to accept additional, additional easements. It's just an increase of the current existing easement, if that makes sense. That they're not asking for another easement, per se. It's just to increase the existing easement just a little bit to encompass the sewer.
Yeah, I guess I'm trying to figure out who owns the land, though.
Oculus does. So it's outside of the University Estates side of things. It's on that other private development.
Okay. That's, and everybody's cool with this?
Yes. Everybody's in agreement.
That's fine.
Any more discussion? This fascinating topic. Audience? Nobody wants to weigh in on it? Well, in that case, that seems to conclude everything for the Committee of the Whole. And since there is no other business before us, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn. Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. We're adjourned.